Here at the end, so they make the appointments actually sort of midway through the meeting, and now they're coming in, so we'll be quiet.
Okay, I might not be attending that meeting in person though, would that be, or at all?
No, it's okay, it would be tonight, yeah, they'll do it tonight later in the meeting, okay, hold tight, we're gonna be quiet so they can get started.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for a committee interview being held just before our council meeting this evening. We will be interviewing one candidate for a vacancy on the Transportation Safety Committee. First, can we get an introduction from our city engineer, Natra Katri?
Yes, good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, introduction for the interview, or?
Yeah, just what are you looking for?
Oh, no, yeah, okay, no, I'm here to give you just feedback on the TSE and what we are looking for, yes, so you have these questions that you'll be asking, we have a pretty good group of members, I would say, some are bike friendly, some are pedestrian friendly, some are transit oriented, so we are looking for a candidate who is overall rounded on everything, with like a new gateway plan, I'm sure they have interest on that, and any transportation safety related matter, mainly for, I would say, we're looking for transit, if somebody is really interested in transit, and how we can make improvements on those and safety, so.
Thank you, Natra. So do we have any public comment for this special meeting related to the interview? Seeing no public comment. Do we have anyone in person who's wanting to, okay. Okay, so we will welcome our applicant, who is Mishka Straka, and welcome.
Yeah.
All right, welcome. So we will each just ask, we're just gonna ask a question, and then we will discuss this later on in the six o'clock meeting. So Councilmember Schaefer, Vice Mayor Schaefer is going to be asking the first question.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for being here with us tonight. I was wondering if you could just describe your interest and experience with various transportation modes, such as vehicular, pedestrian, bicyclist, mass transit, skateboarding, et cetera, and especially that experience of doing those things in Arcata.
Hey, thanks for taking y'all's, your time to interview me for this position, first of all. I go by Mishka, Michael Straka is my more legal, formal name, but everyone just goes, I go by Mishka. And, well, I am a person that tries to motor, get to my destinations either by walking or bicycling as much as possible. I live in, I'm a, I've lived in Arcata for two years now, this is my third spring, I did, I own a home and live in Freshwater, my kids go to Arcata High, my son does, my daughter will next year, and they will be walking, she will be walking to school, my son's graduating. So I'm, and I live in the, sort of like, what might be kind of like the Panhandle, the Gateway District, over up here on Fifth Street, near Jeep. So I see the increase, what seems to, my perception is increased traffic amount in our city, and I, and I realize with the growth that we are expected to have, and Humboldt State expanding, as it's, as it's going to, we're gonna just need to deal with transportation issues, just plain simple, has to be addressed. So it's just something that I thought about, and because I am a cyclist, I'm a runner, I'm a, actually, I'm a good friend of Dave Ryan's, and I didn't even know he was part of the committee when I thought it might be something that's in my interest, that could help, so.
Great, thank you, Mishka.
So committee members are provided meeting materials only a few days prior to the meeting, and each member is expected to review the materials for discussion, and in some cases, perform site visits to fully understand the situation. The time commitment for committee members will vary among individuals, but it may be equivalent to a full day to read and analyze the material in preparation for each meeting. Are you able to make the time commitment necessary for this role?
Yes, I can do that.
Great.
I can make that.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Hi, Mishka. So what are your personal objectives or goals for serving on this committee?
Um, I would just like, I think the blueprint of the future has to be, in general, for our planet, and on a micro scale, we need to reduce fossil fuel consumption, and I think encouraging and making it simpler and more inefficient for people to ride public transit if they aren't motivated to, or able to be a cyclist or a walker to their destinations, that we should, we should be looking at that, how to make it more sustainable and affordable and practical for people to be able to do public transit when needed.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions? Mishka, is there anything that you'd like to add before we, before we close out?
Um, not too much, I mean, I graduated from Humboldt State, I have a degree in environmental systems and sciences from Humboldt State, so I, I know about the community, I've been around quite a while, guess you have a resume or an application that I put in anyway, somewhere, maybe not a resume, but that was on there, and, yeah, that, that stuff is, I mean, no, I just like to be a part of it and help, like, I did attend a recent public meeting, virtually, and that meeting was all about a particular road off of James Road, over by the hospital, and Pacific Union, and that was kind of alarming, I learned a lot about how many pedestrians had been struck in the last year, and how many accidents there are, and that's alarming to me, and I, I don't know, I'd like to see, put our heads together and see what we can do to calm the traffic, and just make it a better place to, to be.
Great, we appreciate that. That is one of our, our current council goals for this year, is to really work to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety, so this committee will be important for that. So we will be back to our regular meeting at six, and it shouldn't be too far into the meeting that we will be discussing your appointment and moving forward on that, so feel free to, to tune in.
Okay.
And thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, we'll take like a six minute break until six o'clock, and then we'll go ahead and start our regular meeting. Good evening, and thank you for viewing the April 6th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Watson is absent, but we do have a quorum.
All right, thank you. So if you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods, or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item on, on what you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press star nine on the phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. For each item, we will be taking the remote public comment first, and then moving to the in-person comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you're waiting to comment remotely, please raise your hand or press star nine as soon as public comment is requested for that item. So next, we have ceremonial matters, and we actually have three proclamations to read, and after, after the proclamation is read, then the person, whoever the council member reading that is, will go down and present it to the people that are here to accept and shake your hand, and you're welcome to stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting, or leave if you so desire, we will not judge you either way. So first, we have proclamation and recognition of the Week of the Young Child.
Okay, the City of Arcata proclamation in recognition of the Week of the Young Child, April 2nd through 8th, 2022. Whereas, North Coast Children's Services, NCS, and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child from April 2nd to 8th, 2022. And whereas Head Start and Early Head Start programs nationally, serve over 1 million low-income children up to five years old, with North Coast Children's Services programs, serving nearly 1,000 children locally. And whereas, North Coast Children's Services, founded as a parent cooperative in 1969, has served young children in our community for over 50 years. And whereas, NCS Head Start and Early Head Start programs support the neediest children and families, the program's success rests in the leadership of parents and support from local businesses, municipalities, community members, and neighbors. And whereas, these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities and literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Arcata and throughout Humboldt County. And whereas, teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Arcata deserve thanks and recognition, and public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to their futures. Now therefore be it proclaimed, that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes the Week of April 2nd through 8th, 2022, as the Week of the Young Child, and encourages our community to make an investment in the early childhood education, because early years are learning years. Personally, both of my two children went through Head Start at Orleans and had a wonderful experience, so thank you so much for all you do.
Next, we have a proclamation and recognition of the 2022 Godwit Days Spring Migration Bird Festival, which is April 15th through 17th.
And I'm happy to read this one, I wanted to make a little brag that two of my high school students took first and second place in the Godwit Days art competition, and will be awarded during the festival, so very exciting, from Northern United Charter School, so bravo to them. So a proclamation and recognition of the 2022 Godwit Days Spring Migration Bird Festival, held April 15th to 17th, 2022. Whereas, about 85 million Americans enjoy observing, photographing, or feeding wild birds, and a 2011 U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service study found that bird watchers contributed $32 billion to the U.S. economy. And whereas, birding is the 15th most popular outdoor activity, just below bicycling, about 18 million birders take trips exclusively to commune with other birders and count birds by sight or sound. And whereas, the Godwit Days Spring Migration Bird Festival showcases the area's rich diversity of birds, normally attracting tourists from all over the United States, and makes Humboldt County a birding destination. And whereas, Godwit Days 2019 attracted over 350 registered participants, 35% of whom came from out of the area. And whereas, ecotourism continues to be an important contributing segment of the North Coast economy, Humboldt Bay, its river estuaries, the region's mountains, coniferous forests, and rugged ocean coast habitats offer a variety of bird species for viewing that surpasses the total bird species counts of 40 states and 10 Canadian provinces. Now therefore be it, now, it's always that one part, now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes the Humboldt County businesses and residents who are participating in the 2022 Godwit Days Spring Migration Bird Festival, as well as future birding visitors to the Pacific North Coast, may they be inspired to migrate back, just as the birds have been doing for centuries. Dated April 6th, and signed by Mayor Stacy Atkins Salazar. And I know we have Alex Stillman here to receive.
Thank you so very much, we always appreciate it every year, and we know it's a really, it was started by the City of Arcata many years ago, and it continues to be a benefit to the city. And so Bob Brown is one of our board members on Godwit Days, and he's been doing the Zoom, he did it last year, he'll be doing it again, and this year it's a, it's virtual, and also in the field, but we don't have a facility, so we won't be doing that. So I'm sorry to make you stand there, Sarah.
(laughter)
So thank you.
(inaudible).
And just because of the week of the child was right before us, I just wanted to point out that as part of the Friends of Arcata Marsh, in conjunction, that we've received 93 nature writing contest entries, and 654 bird art entries of our local kids, so what a great contribution they made.
It really is, because those children, then they'll, they're gonna excel in those other fields, and art, and in nature, and also in writing, so we really appreciate your support, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and our last proclamation is in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So whereas, sexualized violence affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all genders, from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, with public health and social justice implications for every person in Arcata. And whereas, staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour services to survivors and their significant others, and encourages every person to end sexualized violence by providing prevention education and awareness-raising programs throughout Humboldt and Delmarque Counties. And whereas, no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but can, through collaboration and partnership, work together to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not revictimized. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata reaffirms its commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and its vision, a world without violence, and acknowledges April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Dated April 6th, and signed by myself, Stacy Atkins Salazar. And we have Amanda LeBlanc here to receive this.
Thank you so much for your continued support, we really appreciate it, and I just wanted to mention that we are restarting our volunteer training, starting April 25th. If you're interested in joining the team in this challenging and fulfilling work, please visit our website, ncrct.org. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next, we have a report by committee, and it is our annual report from the Wetlands and Creeks Committee, and we have the Chair, Bob Brown, here to do that, so thank you, Bob.
...duty tonight, so, well, thank you for this opportunity, once more to come, it's been a couple of years since we've been in front of the City Council, right? So you have the report before you, we are, we, last year, we celebrated our 29th year as a committee, we actually started as the Arcata Marsh Task Force, so last year was our 40th year as our, as the committee. We have a very involved committee, I recognize all the names on the, on the cover, a lot of expertise that goes into the city's, what our role is, starting on page two, is looking at policies, management, and projects affecting Creeks, Wetlands, and tidal resources. We also have taken over some of the tasks of the Open Space and Agricultural Committee, who, that was not, no longer around. So I did want to mention, Emily Benvee is our staff liaison, and I just want to commend the city for both her promotion, and also hiring Emily Sinkorn as the Environmental Services Director, so great choices, helps a great amount for the city, I think. So, under our policy ordinance and management plans, we are starting to, or have been, looking at the Bayside Ranch Management Plan, so again, that's that large area between Sunset Avenue, and, not Sunset, but Samoa and Bayside Cut Off, so looking at how that land should be managed for multiple uses. We did look at a number of city-owned creek and wetland projects throughout the year, mostly virtual, we did have a field trip and visited a couple of the projects that were grant-funded for improving some of the fish passage and, and wetlands. You also have a contract with Thriving Earth Exchange, looking at visualizing salt marsh habitat transition, we call that living shoreline, so that's kind of an excitement, exciting type of... We call that living shoreline, so that's kind of an excitement, exciting type of project to come to the city, looking at impacts or abating impacts related to sea level rise. So you'll hear more about that. It goes on saying we had one field trip, visiting it. We did participate in the Measure A, special tax expenditures. And then our goals on the bottom of page 3, continue involvement with the local coastal plan, stormwater education, and continuing with Measure A as well. And then we just will continue to provide input and recommendations to support habitat, water quality, and climate resiliency. So, anyway, just a quick report, you know, previous city councils, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, the environment seemed to be a very important thing. I'm not saying it's not as important, but there are a lot of social issues that the city council is dealing with. So just know that your environmental resources are in good hands with your committee and the committee members and your staff members. Thank you. Any questions?
Just, yeah, thank you and for all the work. I was going to say, for preserving our local environment, because, I mean, yeah, there are lots of things that the city council is dealing with, but it still is such an important part of our community and just space that everybody enjoys as well. So thank you guys so much.
Glad to report to you. Thank you.
I just had a, I had a quick question. I was just wondering, because it seems like you have quite a history. How long have you served on this committee?
Since, it's 29 years and
Oh, wow, okay.
40 years. There's a couple of us still around from the Arcata Marsh Task Force days.
Wow, well, thank you very much for your service.
Still around, can't get rid of me.
Good, thank you.
Is there any member of the public that's wanting to make a comment on this particular item?
Seeing no public comment for this item, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have a 15-minute time period that is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and all for the rest of the meeting, all agenda items and our last open oral communications will be three minutes, but this early one is for two. So, do we have anyone online?
Yes, we do. We have Patricia. Go ahead, Patricia.
Um, yeah. So, hello, everybody. I was hoping
Just a moment, please. Let's try it again. I'm sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay, so hello again. And so I was hoping to hear a follow-up about the discussion that was at the end of the previous city council meeting, requesting that there be a joint study session with the planning commissioners and staff, primarily for more information for, regarding a specific versus area plan for the Gateway area. And it would be great to hear an honest and open evaluation comparing the two, and ideally before future Gateway discussions. So with the pace that all of this is going, I think it would behoove everyone involved if the study session was scheduled sooner than later. And I'm really optimistic that, like, well, optimistically, by the next meeting's agenda, since it wasn't added tonight, so now tonight looks like it's a rather large agenda package. So I know Director Loya stated that there had been previous conversations regarding the switch from the area plan that was at a council level, but he had to research when the specific, that specific date was. And I don't know if the council voted to approve the change back then, or either way, it'd just be nice to hear that conversation. So hopefully, we can hear that and figure out when that date was. So anyways, I'm really excited to hear this discussion, and I think it would offer some additional clarification that is, like, so drastically needed to all of us involved. You on the city council, the planning commissioner has been asking for some information as well, and definitely for the public. So anyways, I was kind of hoping to hear when that was coming up on agenda. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Patricia. And just to let you know, we will be having that. I honestly cannot guarantee that it will be at the next meeting, but it is an important meeting that we are all looking forward to. There's just a lot to consider when scheduling the agenda. A lot goes into it, but it will definitely be happening in the near future. I know other people are interested in that as well.
We do have another speaker remotely, Jim. Go ahead, please, Jim.
Hello, council and staff. I also wanted to follow up on the council and the planning commission status and joint study session. I apologize if it's a little redundancy, but just a few thoughts on the past planning commission meeting, the Gateways versus specific plan. And during that March 22nd plan, Commissioner Balced Alcock brought up that the people were making noise, the plan is not transparent enough, she feels that not enough work has been done, community, to get community buy-in, not just community input. And that the choices on the survey didn't sound like they came from the public. The 2020 plan was a reflection of numerous meetings and public input and buy-in. A lot of community members don't feel like they're being heard, and she would like to see more input and invite the public in. She said, "It's clearly a public document, we own it, and the public needs to be a part of it." Director Loya said he could certainly agendize it. Commissioner White piggybacked on Commissioner Balced Alcock's comments, the community input versus buy-in, and also wanted to ante up and give people more opportunities of what they would like to see in the plan. Personally, the Gateway draft feels to me more primarily like a vision of the Community Development Department, backed up by a series of targeted engagements, and drafted by Plan West. I believe that we can do better, and I look forward to seeing the agenda dates for the joint study session. Thank you, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, checking one last time on remote for public comment, anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no more remote comment.
Greetings, council and staff and audience here in the room and out there in the ether. I'm MacGreta, the gadfly of Arcata, but right now, I feel like the man of La Mancha, Don Quijote, to dream the impossible dream, that we think globally and act locally. We make earth first, and its welfare at the top of our agenda every day, and we do things to help us thrive on earth in the future. So I am coming to you tonight to suggest that Earth Day is coming up on April 22nd, which is a Friday. On April 23rd, I'm going to have a little fun at the farmer's market with compost relay, so turn up and play the game, and we'll teach everybody how to put their food waste in the right place as a way of keeping methane gas out of our atmosphere, in addition to carbon dioxide, which happens when we stop using fossil fuels. And so I just really would like to encourage our city council, our city, our community, all the individuals that we really need to urgently. The IPCC report, final assessment, came out on Monday, and it's dire. It is dire. And we here in the redwood forests in Humboldt County, on the west coast of the United States of America, can lead the way. These redwood trees know how to survive on the planet, and we can learn a lot from them, do what they do, and share with others. And so I share with you a protest sign a friend of mine, an artist, local artist made, basically quoting Greta Thunberg on what people in leadership are doing globally, and it's just talking, blah, blah, blah. And I also would like to suggest that on Earth Day, we fly the Earth flag on the top of our city flagpoles and do it until Memorial Day. And then we have a resolution on Earth Day, and I'll be talking to you about that after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Do we have anyone else that's in person that would like to speak? I think, doesn't look like it. Okay. So that leads us into the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of March 2nd, 2022; B, approve the meeting of the city council, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of March 16th, 2022; C, bi-weekly report on general warrants; D, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic; E, request the annual engineers' report and preparation of notices to declare the city's intention to continue to levy and collect assessments of existing assessment districts to include Mad River Parkway Business Center Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, that is quite a name, the Windsong Subdivision Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, and Janes Creek Meadow Landscape Maintenance Assessment District. F, approval, approve the proclamation and recognition of World Tai Chi Day, April 30th, 2022, and place it on the list of annual approved proclamations. And G, adopt Resolution Number 212-55, authorizing the execution of the certifications and assurances and authorized agent forms for the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, the LCTOP, for the following project, the A and MRTS free fares in the amount of $13,595. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Can I pull Item G, please?
Sure, absolutely. Is there any member of the public or staff that requests an item be removed from the consent calendar? Okay. So let's go.
I saw hand.
What's that, landscape maintenance?
That is, that is for the, it's the assessments that go into the developments that have, like, city maintenance attached to them, and so there's a fee attached to their parcels. Yeah, it's nothing too exciting. All right, so let's go ahead if we want to make a motion for A through, was it G that you pulled?
Yes.
Okay, so A through F?
I move that we approve consent calendar items A through F.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's go ahead and go to Item G.
Hi, Netra. I just wanted to hear a staff report. I am a huge proponent of anything that will make any kind of public transportation more accessible and free, so I just want to talk about this a little more and kind of have everybody hear about what's going on. So thank you.
Okay, I'll just give you a quick staff report. So since the inception of LCTOP three years ago, we took advantage of that, and we are trying to, our goal is to increase the ridership for the transit. So with that in mind, we've been applying for this funding to just provide free riders during summertime when the storms are here and people are, the weather is nice. So in the month of June and July in last year, we have provided free services to all the users in the transit, our transit in Arcata, and we are continuing to do that for the year 22, 23.
So do you see the ridership go up a lot during those months when it's free?
I would say, I don't have a numbers, but I can provide that number so later on, but yes, we do see some increase because of the free ridership.
Do we advertise that anywhere?
Yes, we do advertise that.
Excellent, thank you so much.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number, unless anybody else has any questions? Like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 212-55, authorizing the execution of the certifications and assurances and authorized agent forms for the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, LCTOP, for the following project, A and MRTS free fares in the amount of $13,595.
I'll second.
Oh, is there any public comment on this item?
There is none on remote.
So it looks like we have no public comment, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so we have, for new business, the first item is to appoint one new member to the Transportation Safety Committee for a term expiring March 31st, 2023. And we did interview a candidate just prior to this meeting, Mishka Straka. So do we have any discussion or a nomination?
I would like to nominate Mishka Straka to the Transportation Safety Committee for a term, thank you, that ends March 31st, 2023.
I'll second.
And do we have any public comment on this item?
Checking for any public comment on this item on Zoom and seeing none.
Okay, it looks like there's no public comment, so we have a nomination and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so thank you, Mishka, and welcome to the committee. All right, so our second and last piece of new business is for receiving an update on the, for KUNA, on the participatory budgeting process and approve the selected proposals for beautification and community connectivity in Valley West. So could we please have a staff report from our Environmental Services Director, Emily Sinkorn?
Great, well, good evening, Mayor and council members and members of the public. Our department is really excited to present this evening with community group KUNA and really share about the process and results of the recent participatory budgeting process in Valley West. And that was really to identify the Valley West community's priorities for beautification of public spaces in Valley West, and also ways to really foster more community connectivity. So joining me in the presentation will be KUNA Coordinator Kimberly White, and she's joining via Zoom. And I'm really recommending the council receive the presentation and then consider the proposals that came out of this process. So we're just pulling up some visuals, and so that'll be coming here in a minute. But this community process was really initiated as your council, for the beginning of this fiscal year, allocated $15,000 from the city's general plan to support beautification and fostering community connectedness in Valley West. And then, again, in the fall, when we had our American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding opportunities, the council really saw priorities for Valley West and had allocated ARPA funding to support both KUNA and also just further work in Valley West. So since December, we've had an MOU with KUNA, and they have been really expanding networks in Valley West. They've been making more connections with the business community, Spanish-speaking families. They've been conducting community cleanups. And then we also have a task for KUNA to work with the city on some special projects to really get more community engagement. And so through the MOU between the city and Cooperation Humboldt, of which KUNA is a project, we really saw the opportunity to get community priorities for this $15,000 set aside and allocation. So again, we've really been thankful for this partnership, and I will now be passing it to Kimberly, but our visuals are not yet up, so thank you for your patience. And then we'll show you some great pictures kind of when we get there. But I'm going to pass it to Kimberly to share about the participatory budgeting process and the outcomes.
Great, thank you, Emily. First, I'd like to thank both city council and staff for the opportunity to do this first ever in Humboldt County, a pilot participatory budget process. This participatory budget process pilot has been fun, engaging, and really exciting. We hope that other municipalities and organizations see the positive results of civic engagement, and they will hopefully also join in and use this. Sorry, looking for the visuals, I don't see them, so I'm a little lost, but I will find it. So basically, participatory budget processes take a piece of the city So basically, participatory budget processes take a piece of the city budget and empower residents to decide how to spend their money or this money in their community. Participatory budget processes are typically designed to involve those left out of traditional methods of public engagement, such as low-income residents, non-citizens, and youth. Participatory budgeting was first developed in the 1980s by the Brazilian Workers' Party, drawing on the party's stated belief that the electoral success is not an end in itself, but a springboard for developing participatory forms of democracy. The participatory budget process comes out of Latin America and just bringing those roots to our Latinx community in Valley West just made sense. It was a perfect opportunity to engage this process as city council had already allocated funding for Valley West. So I'm going to assume that there might be a visual up here?
We are... Yeah, apologies, Kimberly. We are working on that right now. Should be just a...
You want me just to go on without it? I can.
If you hold on 10... About two seconds, we'll get you to the right place.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that introduction, Kimberly.
I'm back. Ah-ha, there it is.
Yeah.
Are we ready? Okay. The first part of the process was that we put together a steering committee, which was made up of community residents. We also had people who worked and live in Valley West as part of the committee. And so we defined or created and defined the rules of engagement. And so what was decided was you could be part of brainstorming and voting if you were a resident, and you also could be part if you were somebody who lived in Valley West but also worked there. So we did... The second part, we began the brainstorming sessions. What we did was we worked with the city staff to refine proposals, ensure that they would be feasible to implement. And so then we would develop the proposals. Then we held a participatory budget voting event, which was held in person in addition to both call-in and online voting opportunities. And then we're at the process where we're here now, where we bring the winning proposals that the community voted on to city council, and then we will finally evaluate what we could do differently, what worked, what didn't in the second round of the $30,000 American Rescue Plan Act funds that are allocated also by the city. And I believe that next one will be Emily.
Thank you, Kimberly. Kimberly, if you want to share any just of your experience on these photos. These photos are really capturing the process of the in-person voting on... For the... At Red Roof Inn at the conference room, which was a fantastic event and great to see people of all ages participating.
Absolutely. So we reached out to the community. This was our method of engagement. We reached out to the community via email, press releases, flyers, social media. I went out to the shopping center, hit the streets, and to let folks know what we were doing. We solicited ideas via residents from Facebook, calls, email. And then we took all of the ideas that the participants shared to develop proposals into ideas. And so I feel like the event was super successful because at one point, I feel like Valley West residents had felt they had been left out. So it was super exciting to see 47 people showed up. We had a total of 74 people to vote. And we even had people who didn't live in Valley West community, but were really excited to see what was going on. I feel like once people see these projects implemented and that they see that their voice was heard, we're going to even have more folks coming to the table and wanting to participate. We had a variety of residents from both Valley West, North Arcata, that attended the Red Roof voting event. We had a live DJ. We had food. We had childcare. And we had folks coming that we had not previously engaged, new demographics, which was super exciting. We had residents from Lazy J Ranch Mobile Home Park, Town and Country Mobile Home Park, Valley West Mobile Estates. We had families and children come out. We had folks from River Community Homes, Vill de Baye condominiums, Cricklewood Apartments, and off over by Courtyard, Boyd Road, and on the other side of west of the highway. So we had a pretty good representation of Valley West, North Arcata. And before I forget, I want to give a big thank you to Red Roof Inn for their generous donation of the conference room for our voting event. And maybe another slide. There you go. So these were the winning proposals. The top winning proposal was fruit trees. Everybody was interested in planting fruit trees. So that was the highest ranking. And behind that close second was the outdoor amenities. So what they're asking for is an outdoor picnic table and grill by the basketball court, which will also add additional opportunities for community celebrations and gatherings. Then the third one is a tiangis, which is the Latinx version of a flea market. And so our Spanish-speaking community is super excited to bring that and share that with the community and what that looks like. So I've never been to one, but I can already smell the tamales and hearing the music and the excitement. So I hope you guys all come and join us for this. The next one was teen meetups. Our youth out here, their night downtown is cruising the aisles of Ray's Food Place. So we're going to offer them something a little more exciting. We're going to be doing movie nights, bowling trips, a trip to Cal Poly, Humboldt, Talonica Marine Lab, and Trinidad. And then they're going to also tell us what they want to do. We're also going to do adult classes. And I'm super excited to tell you that we have a new dance studio coming into the Valley West Shopping Center. And it's Ramon, or excuse me, Raymond. He is from Redwood Rocks. Shashana told me that he was one of her teachers. So we're very excited. He also taught at Health Sport and had a following, if you will, groupies. He's fantastic. So super exciting Latinx dance lessons. And we're going to be doing weekend theater for children. That will be brought to you by Arcata Playhouse. And then the residents wanted to see art. We have a sculpture, and it's a beautiful sculpture. If you haven't seen it, Luna, La Luna, which is in the roundabout. But they wanted to see more. So what they voted was to do murals with the... Excuse me, the rebound project, which is a mural for the basketball court that the city has so graciously given us, which is right across the street from Holland Court. So that's a project, Rebound. Ben Funke... I'm going to probably butcher his name, Funke. And he is with Ink Project, sorry. And then also finally, the last project was the mural man, Ben Gulart. And he's going to be offering free painting lessons, mural painting lessons to the community. And we'll be putting together up to five separate mural projects. So they will be at the park. They will be a variety from artists who have experience in painting to youth learning to paint for the first time. So it's going to represent the community, which is super exciting. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Kimberly. So again, just it's... We really appreciate all that KUNA put into putting on this event and really see that this type of participatory budgeting process, the pilot, you know, could be used as a model for future considerations of, you know, other parts of the city budget for other specific projects. So there's a lot to learn and still a lot to learn in that process. So we are really... City staff is looking to implement these projects with KUNA and the other partners that were described by the end of the fiscal year. And city staff will be leading the implementation of the picnic amenities and fruit trees at Valley West Park with some community involvement in the planting workday. And KUNA will be leading the tiangis and teen meetups and then partners for the, you know, classes. We're excited about working with KUNA and the artists for the murals. And this comes at great timing where the Environmental Services Department and community development are working on updates to our art around Arcata guidelines. And this really came out of the Arcata Strategic Arts Plan. And so really getting those guidelines to be... Those guidelines and the review process to be in line with that recently updated plan. We hope to have that more updated by the end of the month or early May so that we can work with these artists through that process and then hopefully more artists this summer and going forward. So in closing, just really want to thank KUNA for this engagement. And, you know, please let Kimberly or I know if you have any questions on the proposals.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I love KUNA. I am just so happy to see Valley West, you know, the citizens kind of taking control of what they want to spend their money on and having it turn into such a vibrant community out there. I think all of these things that the participatory budget has chosen are fantastic. I can't wait to see them all in action. I'm excited to take dance classes. But yeah, and I think that this is really... This is going to be a great example. Hopefully, the next time we do it, there'll be more people participating because they'll see all their good work come to fruition. And thank you, Kimberly, and thank you, KUNA. This is wonderful.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, echo all of that and just thank you, Kimberly, and thank you, Emily, and everybody who worked on this through KUNA and through city staff. I mean, these proposals look wonderful. I'm really excited to see these things happen. And it's been a fun process to follow. I mean, via the local news and social media. I know they touched on this a few times as well. So it's really nice to finally see it, you know, come to fruition and be in front of us. So this is wonderful.
Yeah, and definitely, Kimberly, you have been really tireless in trying to get the word out to everybody in Valley West. I see you all the time being so vocal and so involved in this and really trying to get such buy-in from so many different people in Valley West. So kudos to everybody in KUNA. Look forward to more events. You're going to have a great one on the 23rd. I think that I'll be at this disaster preparedness event. So I just... I love seeing all these things happening in Valley West. So thank you.
You know, in city government, you usually don't see $15,000 going very far. And it's really impressive, the ideas and what they've come up with to make that amount of money really make a difference in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to suggest... I know this is an estimate, but right now, as it stands, their estimate is at $15,400, which is 400 over budget. But if the rest of you concur, I would like to suggest that if it does end up being that additional 400, that we go ahead and authorize that, if that's... Unless there's objections to that.
Absolutely.
And I just... I did check with our city manager before making that. So I did check with Karen, and she said that that would be fine.
That was my next logical question. But yeah, no, that sounds great to me.
Even though it's $400, it's important to ask. So I did. So yeah, so thank you for that. And then I did have a question, and this is just me not remembering, so I apologize. But have we already set an amount for that second amount of the ARPA funding? Did we come up with that?
Yeah, the current MOU with KUNA just is focused on staffing and supplies. But the allocation that your council made was up to $217,500. And so there's about $30,000 that is remaining that could be allocated either to KUNA through that MOU or through another process with the intention of implementing those funds in Valley West. So we'll have more further discussions to then bring to the council just options for how to utilize those remaining $30,000.
Thank you. Let's see. Sorry, glasses. Are there any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this? Checking first for any comment on Zoom for this item and seeing none.
Hi, this is McGretta again, Joanne McGary. I was able to attend that participatory budget vote up at the Red Roof Inn because they used my reusable green dishes for the pizza and salad, which I was happy to loan out to them to keep trash cans emptier. And I do go up on occasion to the Valley West cleanup. And this participatory in neighborhood concept is something we really need to look at because what happened there in Valley West was really exciting and just to see the number of things that they can do with a little bit of money. And so when we're thinking about participatory things in other aspects in other neighborhoods, such as the so-called gateway plan, I just think getting the people who live here involved right up front, you know. And I just want to say that this Valley West and KUNA effort, I'm so impressed by how it's looking. And it's a model for other ways we can do other things in other parts of our community. So kudos, congratulations to Kimberly White and to all the people involved in the Valley West effort. So thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
So yeah, I mean, what direction do we need? Is it... Okay. Wonderful. Well, then I move that we approve the selected proposals for beautification and community connectivity in Valley West.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. So that brings us to oral and written communications again. And this is a time provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So if you are in person and wanting to give public comment, you can go ahead and start to line up at the podium. If you're online, please raise your hand. If you're on the Zoom webinar or press star nine. Now, if you are on a phone line and you would like to make a public comment. And speakers will be limited to three minutes. So when it's your time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. Alright, we do have a few remote speakers to begin with. The first one will be Kurt, and then after that, we have Patricia. Go ahead, please, Kurt.
Check, check, check. Am I coming through? Anybody?
Yes, you are.
Terrific, thanks. So I just want to again address the committee because I'm just sitting here listening to these orders of business, and they're fabulous and super important stuff. And yet, it's astonishing to me that you sit there and we sit there and everything is if it's fine and everything is going to be great. And yet, this city is on a collision course with bankruptcy. We're somewhere between $300 and $500 million in arrears on maintenance. We have sewer pipes collapsing. There was an earthquake last week, and it probably cost the city a million dollars in broken sewer pipes. And we're talking about building a wastewater system for $64 million. And yet, the pipes that feed it are failing miserably. And it's $5 million a mile to fix. We have 50 miles of 60-year-old pipe that's failing. And every day that nothing happens, we move from a situation we have today, which is very, very bad, to a situation that is very close on the horizon, which is impossible. And if the city doesn't take action immediately, we're going to very soon be on a path where there is no solution. It's $5 million a mile, 50 miles according to a recent magazine that Chief Engineer Cotry spoke in called I&amp;I Magazine. He's quoted as saying, "There's 50 miles that need work." I have several good friends who tell me it's $1,000 a foot to fix for $5 million a mile. And yet, we sit here like everything's fine. I don't know why the chief engineer is not on the podium answering questions now. What's going on? Like, are you guys... I mean, seriously, hello, is this thing on? We are $300 million in arrears. That's about $35,000 per household. There is zero way to collect that money. So if you guys, who seem to be young, care about the city and want to see a future where it's actually a viable operation, why aren't we taking action? The point I'm trying to make here is there are solutions, but it involves serious discussion of mature adults about a terrible problem. And until we get to that point where we can face it, any solution is silly. So please, committee members. So please, committee members, please, I beg you, get the chief engineer out here. Ask him how much to fix this. Get the chief financial officer. What is the nature of our pension problem? How bad is it? Add those numbers up. What about our freshwater pipes? They're also 60 years old. How bad is it? I suggest $300 to $500 million. Please, the future of the city is absolutely in doubt until we start to take action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kurt. And just to let you know, I'm not sure if you were the person that I was corresponding in an email with, but we are going, we are scheduled to have a discussion specifically on the wastewater treatment plant. So we will definitely have that discussion that you're asking for. Is there anyone else online? Yes, next we have Patricia. Go ahead, please, Patricia.
Um, yeah, so I, I kind of missed my opportunity to put a shout out to Kimberly White with all she's doing out for Valley West with the Kuna project and everybody that worked on that. That's just awesome what they, I have to, you know, say it's just awesome what they did with so little funds. I mean, it is a quite, it's not a lot of fun. So I'm just really impressed with how they gathered everybody and they got everybody together. And then today I was reading in the Mad River Union that there is a meeting in the Valley West for Spanish speakers to cover the Gateway Plan, which I think is awesome. The more communities we can get involved and in the discussion, the better. I didn't see it on the website, the city website. It would be nice if it was listed on the city website. And I'm also, so anyways, I'm excited to hear that. I'm kind of going to tell as many people that I know, especially my Spanish-speaking friends to go and get involved. And, but I know there's going to be a presentation and then after question and answer session, which would be really refreshing, especially the question and answer session. So I'm also asking that maybe for the residents that live and work within the Gateway area that we could have one too. I think the more communities we get involved with it, the better. We got skipped over and we've been saying this over and over again, but as residents that live within the Gateway, we've never had that opportunity. So it'd be great if we as well could have that opportunity. So yeah, I'm really happy to see more of these question and answer sessions after the presentation come about. And we have a tent now inside our Gateway area, right with thanks to the, thanks to the Playhouse. So, and the city. So, so yeah, so we have a place for that. So anyways, I just want to give my shout out to Kuna and also try, I will try my best to put out the information, the Valley West meeting that's coming up this Thursday, April 14th, from 6:00 to 7:30. So it'd be nice to see it on the website. So anyways, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patricia. Okay, excuse me, checking one last time on remote attendees if there is anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight. Seeing none.
I actually love coming here. So I volunteer at the Playhouse and I just want to share with you all the great things they're doing under the big top that the city of Arcata purchased and is set up down there on Eighth Street. So I'll give this to Bridgette. They're doing family fun stuff and Lori Lewis, who's not Sarah's mother, another wonderful musician named Lori Lewis is playing as well. But that's my little promo for a great resource in the community, which is the Arcata Playhouse. But again, I want to get back to the earth that we all reside upon and the urgency of our city and our community really showing that we're doing something and talking about it and talking about what more we can do. And every meeting has ceremonial matters coming up at the beginning. And it's very time consuming as much as supporting children and birds and the habitats and sexual assault awareness and all that. I think there's another way we can do ceremonial matters that's even more effective and get it on access TV and things like that. And then maybe spend some time on things like the climate crisis, the climate emergency, and having a report every meeting about what our community is doing, what action we are taking. I mean, not just purchasing electric vehicles. I mean, we're still mowing lawns with gas-powered lawn mowers. Fossil fuels need to not be used anymore. So we really have to start talking seriously, quickly, urgently, and setting an example. I did speak to you at the last meeting about my inspiration of the THC's and I'll remind you what those were. The Ts were trust, truth, and transparency. The H's were humility, honesty, and humaneness. And the C's were caring, compassion, and connectedness. But I have a CBD for you. And it's a, the CBD is courage, bravery, and decisiveness. So please, please, I, I am channeling people like Greta and people like Sir Richard, David Attenborough, who writes in this introduction of his book, The Great Mistake. And the great mistake that we all are making is complacency, feeling comfortable. We need to get out of our comfort zone because it's not going to last that much longer if we don't start doing something on the climate. So I rode my bike here. I try and walk as much as possible. I try and not use my car as much as possible. I spent a whole time at the planning commission meeting learning about a new dispensary where there's three other dispensaries. And the whole time was taken up on talking about a dispensary and nothing was talked about on planning for a climate crisis. So let's get to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, so next we have council and staff reports. So we'll go ahead and start with a report from our environmental services staff on the city of Arcata's summer recreation program offerings.
Good evening, council members. So I am excited to round out this council meeting, talking about a lighthearted subject, which is summer camps. More importantly, I'm excited to showcase just a part of what our recreation team does for the city. They work tirelessly and they're very dedicated staff. So excited to share our plan for 2022 summer camps. So before we get into the plan for 2022, I wanted to step back and take a look at the bigger picture, which is how summer camps tie in with council goals, council policy objectives, priority projects, and some of our budget program highlights. One other element that I wanted to touch on is how our recreation division has adapted their summer camps during COVID 2020, 2021, and now heading into 2022. With regulations continually changing, they have really dedicated time and effort to ensuring that summer program offerings have been able to continue for the last couple of years. And so we're excited to start to rebuild that program participant levels now that we're heading into a quote unquote, more normal pre-COVID type existence or normal existence with COVID, I'll say. So I won't read all of the city council goals, priorities, and policy objectives, but I just did want to highlight for a moment that our summer camp really does fit well within many of councils' initiatives. So this chart here is what is called the sunshine chart. It is developed every year for summer camps, year to year. Some, some things I wanted to highlight on this slide specifically in addition to the sunshine, sunshine chart are a few quotes that family members have shared around our summer programming over the last couple of years, as well as our number of participants. You'll see that in 2020, which was the first year with COVID, our participation, our participant numbers really were reduced as a result of that COVID. In 2021, you'll see they jumped up to higher numbers than 2019. Part of that is because in 2021, all of our programs were half-day, where before they were full days. So there can be a little bit of double counting, so to speak. Also, part of the reason is that in 2021, to offer extended childcare and further assist parents who were working remotely and students who are out of school or out of in-person classroom, we offered fall camps for families. So that's part of the increase in numbers as well. This year, we have built on past program successes, one being the Forest and Adventure Camps have expanded from a half-day to a full day. And I'll actually pause. I glazed right over the sunshine chart without itemizing or explaining the different camps that we have in the city. So we have a skate camp, redwood day camp, marsh camp, art camp, forest camp, and adventure camp. During 2020 and 2021, we adapted that structure a little bit to offset some of the impacts associated with redwood day camp, which one of, which is our larger camp and it's full day. So starting there. So Forest and Adventure Camps have expanded from a half-day into a full day this year. We have more participant spots available in 2022. In COVID years, we also expanded the marsh and skate camp to offset some of the reduced camp offerings associated with redwood day camp decreases. Now in 2022, we're continuing to offer that expanded camp option. We had our first day of summer camp signups today, coincidentally. We're about two-thirds full. So typically we've, we can, I think last year we had sold out in like the first two hours. So it fills up very quickly. We still have about a third capacity. Some of our camps are full, some are not. So plug to the community members watching who might be wanting to sign up for summer camp, there is still time. And I also wanted to share that we really utilize all of the possible city-owned locations that we can to offer camps in as many different locations as possible that have adequate, for example, outdoor space and restroom facilities. So how is summer camp funded? There are two main components, one being the summer camp fees themselves and the other is the general fund to help support the full-time staff who oversees all of the summer camp programming. I do want to pause here and note that summer camp fee, summer camp itself is a revenue-positive funding source, which is to say that we bring in more revenue for summer camps than the direct summer camp costs are, which support part-time staff and supplies mainly. And so the balance of that general fund helps to support our full-time staff. So just really wanting to note that recreation has done a great job of finding that balance in offering summer camps as low cost as possible to be more accessible to the community while also covering costs to minimize reliance on the general fund. Our summer camp program fees did increase by $20 for a full day this year. The reason for that is minimum wage has increased as of January 1st, 2022 to $15 an hour. And we really wanted to recognize the really important service that childcare providers have been providing. That's certainly been highlighted during the COVID-19 pandemic where there's been a lack of childcare providers. So wanting to elevate the program director wages as much as possible to stay competitive and maintain really good quality staff. Another funding source is, or I should say scholarship, is our youth development fund. So that is a scholarship program that we offer, which allows a 30% fee reduction to income-qualified residents. It is funded by a couple small grant programs, individual fundraising events that the city staff typically puts on, and individual donors. I'll make another plug for the community, which is to say individuals can donate online to our youth development fund. And I also wanted to talk a little bit about program inclusivity. The youth development fund being one element that recreation strives to create inclusive programs that are accessible to all. We are also a child, Changing Tides childcare provider, which is to say that we work with Changing Tides to heavily subsidize program fees for individuals and families who are enrolled with Changing Tides. We offer payment programs so that if a individual is enrolled in, say, 10 weeks of summer camp, that family pays for week one on registration day and then pays on a weekly basis so that they can budget more long-term for that. We offer both in-person and online signups. We offer a variety of camps to meet different developmental stages and interests. And we provide camps in the most integrated setting appropriate for each individual. As we talked a little bit, or a lot earlier, on Kuna's participatory budgeting process in Valley West, I wanted to highlight some of the summer programming offerings that we're anticipating for Valley West specifically. And there is an interrelatedness perhaps in some of that participatory budgeting work and what our recreation staff is hoping to offer. So one is not summer camp specific itself, but the city has executed a shared facility use agreement with Laurel Tree. And so Laurel Tree is planning to offer summer school during the weekdays over the summer. However, city, or city programs will be able to utilize some of their restroom options during the day. And then when Laurel Tree is not occupying the space, we'll be able to use that indoor space as well. Pacific Union is planning to offer summer camp as well as summer school. And so while that's not a city-sponsored event, it does speak to helping fill some of that need and that gap, having local childcare in that community. And our recreation staff is aiming at planning pop-up events. We're hoping for three. And that would be targeted to different types of events, working with our community partners to start, start better understanding what programs are really well-attended and what's popular and what offerings we might want to offer in the future. So we're likely going to do that with input from Kuna, Arcata Main Street, Arcata Playhouse, and Cooperation Humble. So next, next steps will be to reach out to those community partners, learn from them, what they're hearing, what we're thinking we could offer, and where we can dovetail efforts, leverage efforts, and make sure we're not duplicating worker services. So I will end there and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much for the time.
Yay, I just registered my kids for camp today. So thank you. Thank everybody in the recreation department. Thank both Heathers that deal with me. You are all wonderful. I think this is my kid's fifth year at camp. I think they've been through every program except for skate camp because my kids. And this will be my oldest second year as a leader in training at the camp, which I think is a wonderful program. You know, I grew up my whole life going to camp. It is so enriching and important. And as, you know, a full-time working mom, it is a lifesaver to know that my kids have enrichment and a great opportunity to be outside and do things that they're passionate about. So I just want to thank you guys for your hard work. It's, it's wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, very clear, comprehensive overview. Wonderful. Super happy that, you know, we're getting kids out again. And as a former redwood day camp child, I can say, yeah, it's important to our community. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, all three of my kids spend a lot of time in summer camps and I do know that it is competitive to get them in because I made that mistake in the beginning of not being on it. So yeah, they're popular programs. So thank you for sharing that. Do we have any other staff updates? And what about any council member updates?
Sure, I just want to let everybody know there is a Arcata Chamber mixer tomorrow. It will be at Synapsis in Eureka. It's hosted by Las Bagels and Redwood Curtain Brewery, 5:30 to 7:30. Zero Ways Humble, thank you as well. Thank you, Joanne. I think that's all I have right now.
I don't currently have any updates for this week. Okay, so.
Oh, and the recycling center is open.
We did visit that this weekend and it was great. So for dates of future meetings, we have a budget overview study session, which is Wednesday, May 25th at 5:30 in the council chambers. And we also have scheduled a study session with the committee chairs, which will be Tuesday, May 31st at 6:00 PM, also here in the council chambers. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for being here. that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for being here.